All right, and we're gonna do YouTube later, you said, right? So I won't wait for that. Um, good evening, everyone. I want to call to order this special meeting of the Community Services Committee, Thursday, September twenty first. Um, with us this evening, members of the committee, we have Councilperson Greg Burnett, Councilperson Barbara Smith, Councilperson Nicole Ayers, and myself, David Hubelman Chair. And we're gonna get started with public comment. Let us see, I believe we have one attendee. Is that correct with their hand raised? Can we promote them to speak?
They have been promoted.
And, okay, I'm not sure on a phone. Oh, there we go. Let's see, the unmuted happened. Go ahead, you, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Chairman Hubelman. My name is Diane Lorachella, twenty-one, Little Fox Lane. Um, I haven't, uh, I've listened to recordings, but I haven't actually spoken at, uh, throughout the summer, take a little break, but still keeping in touch. Um, I first wanted to congratulate Deanna Di Amore for her award, uh, so noted. Um, I am looking forward to having a more fruitful relationship related to what I want to speak about tonight, the main thing, and that is during the Health Department reporting and the epidemiologist, um, I have encountered several friends and colleagues who have contracted COVID. One of them has been hospitalized, uh, and, and it is something that is like the flu, like RSV, things that we have to, we're aware is creeping up, it's the colder weather. The thing is, as I am on record for now three years, I wanted to, um, ask that this council be informed as it's ongoing and we're preparing for COVID. What are the plans to more creatively and better, uh, distribute information beyond the, the, the facts, the vaccination booster shots that are being planned? And I know that's a lot of work, and I think the Health Department does a great job working with others and nurses and the like. However, um, I noticed when I got my, um, my vaccination, my booster, uh, last time it was available, um, that the information table and the, uh, table where people are waiting had no information about the different types of masks. Uh, for some of you on this call, I have an OSHA background. I used to help select masks for hazardous waste, but still, details make the difference. So this year, I'm going to try a new approach because I have been assured that, uh, the Health Department and the State Health Department are, are letting people know. But I am, I'm afraid I don't agree that we've done enough to make it clear in advance so people can purchase masks. I secondly would like to suggest that with some of the IRA and ARPA money, if there's any left over, that we consider, um, uh, buying, uh, at least KN ninety-five masks, if not N ninety-five masks. Instead of just giving them out, we actually give out a flyer about all the different ways that people can reduce their exposure level, even starting now, to COVID and any other virus that's coming around that we, that we're reading about. Because before you know it, we're going to be in the Thanksgiving time, and people are going to start being indoors because it's getting colder. And even though I know after I speak, the staff dutifully and predictably gives a razzmatazz about the things they're doing, including a, a special game they made up. Well, that's all well and good, but without proper signage, um, outlining, out, outlining, for instance, at Stop and Shop and Shop Right, uh, different ways of wearing a mask, both right and wrong, we're missing opportunities to help people reduce their exposure levels. So, um, and I have some of a background in this, and so I wanted just to put the council members, uh, make them aware that, um, because we all know COVID is coming, I want to see a much more robust way to, um, give people information that they can use and not have to click tw- five times to get to the CDC's excellent information. But a lot of people won't take the time that we all will to find that information. So let's make it easy. Let's also try to put it right up front on the city website on the homepage. Um, lastly, I just want to inform you that there is available the Connecticut DEEP con- uh, contracted with a consultant to take samples of where PFOS or the forever chemicals are located in fish, um, in, in sewage treatment plant, um, uh, discharges throughout the state, including Norwalk. Uh, I am just gonna get a hold of this. This is avail- available for you all. I think the Health Department should start looking at this and get back to you and the public about PFOS. And again, in a proactive, creative, and informative way, what is our Health Department doing to reduce our exposure to PFOS? We all have it in our blood system, most of us do, because of our, our federal government not controlling it from over the years. However, going forward, what can this Health Department do to help bring awareness and also help us reduce our exposure? Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lorachella. Um, appreciated. Is there any other member of the, um, community that would like to speak for public comment? I don't see anyone else. Um, I also noticed that, um, Ms. Teresa Argendezzi is in the attendees. I don't know if she needs to be promoted or not, so. All right, seeing no other member of the public, I would like to close this section, public comment, and we will move on to the rest of the agenda. Uh, first off, we have approval of the minutes. Uh, we have two different sets of minutes to approve. Uh, we'll do, uh, the approval of the minutes from the July twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, can I have a motion? Uh, Ms. Barbara Smith, uh, motions. Um, so do, are there any changes, amendations to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from the July twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting, uh, please, uh, signify by raising your hand. Uh, all opposed? And abstentions? Motion carries. So the minutes of the twenty, July twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-three meeting are approved. Now I'll move to the special meeting of August third, twenty twenty-three, uh, the approval of those minutes. Can I have a motion, please? Can we get a motion? Anyone? Barbara, thank you. Uh, Ms. Smith, uh, moves, uh, the minutes. Uh, do we have any changes, amendations, um, corrections? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of the special meeting of August third, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? And abstentions? We have one abstention, uh, Councilperson Nicole Ayers. So that motion carries. The minutes are now approved. Um, we're moving to number four, the discussion section, updates from the Health Department. And we have our Health Director, our award-winning Health Director, uh, Ms. Deanna Di Amore, and, uh, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Hubelman. Um, good evening, everyone. So, um, Brian, uh, Weeks, our Program Director of Epidemiology and Informatics, is gonna give an update on where we are with the respiratory season, um, and then I'll summarize some of our action and some, um, other updates. So I will pass it to Brian first.
Thank you, Deanna. Uh, hi, everybody. I'm actually doing this presentation from the airport, so bear with some background noise. Hopefully you're hearing me okay. Uh, so with that said, I'll just jump right into the presentation, just to kind of give an overview where we're at, uh, looking at the respiratory illness season, uh, looking at the data, um, and. So as you can see here, what's showing up is the wastewater monitoring by county for state of Connecticut. So I'm showing it by each county, just because I think it's helpful to see where things are at, uh, overall. And as you can see, Fairfield County is still holding as the highest right now in terms of that wastewater monitoring, the concentration that's detected, um, along with obviously Hartford and New London Counties kind of also being the lead as well. So, um, you know, it's kind of an indicator, especially some of the more densely populated counties, um, you know, having that kind of activity. New Haven County uniquely not having that as much, but that's also because the surveillance has kind of concluded to some degree. So it's gonna be kind of a gap, and so it's gonna be relying on resources to kind of, uh, inform that. Again, this is the biobot, uh, surveillance, wastewater monitoring surveillance that's indicating this, and this is that data source that's, uh, kind of showing that Fairfield, Hartford, and New York County are in the higher end right now and growing in, in terms of especially Fairfield County. So just keeping that in mind, I think it's a very important indicator. So along with that, you know, obviously, the, uh, the indicator from the CDC, this is the county levels, uh, new hospital admission rates for the last, uh, seven days, per hundred thousand. Um, and this is just looking at it, you know, overall for each county. As you can see here, for the overall country, we do have a mixture of some in the yellow as well as the orange, and then obviously, majority of countries still in the green. Uh, and so that's actually about almost eighty-eight percent. Um, and so what does that mean? Again, this is kind of mirroring what we saw with the community levels, the COVID community levels that the CDC enacted, you know, in the prior season. Uh, that has concluded because some data sets are not readily available, if they have been, and also an adjustment from the CDC in terms of kind of treating COVID more like, you know, a flu season of sorts. Uh, but with that said, they still are using the new hospital admissions metric as the way to guide, you know, especially if you're seeing like severity of illness and the increase of that and what to do. Uh, and so to that point, right now, the Northeast is mostly in the green. You can see how some of the, you know, New York, Vermont, we're answering those type of few counties in the yellow. Unfortunately, Connecticut is not in any other color than green right now, so it's very good indication right now at the moment, but we do want to keep an eye on things as, you know, we kind of keep making our way creeping towards, uh, the increase for respiratory illness season. So it's very important. So what does that actually entail or mean? Um, to keep in mind, uh, it's kind of just like the community levels. Again, just stay up to date with your vaccines. It's gonna be one of our best tools, especially with the updates to the vaccines that have occurred. Uh, and then also the fact that we do have vaccines for the triple down, right? We have it for COVID, along with influenza and also RSV, uh, based upon certain elevabilities. But it's important. And then, so with that said, at any level, you want to be mindful of ventilation, avoiding contact to people suspected confirmed COVID nineteen, follow isolation recommendations for that. Uh, you know, and just, you know, being mindful, especially somebody who's more susceptible to illness. You know, again, if you have pre-existing conditions that can complicate, of course, an illness, be mindful of that. Please do speak with your physician, take the proper precautions in a sense. Uh, should it enter the medium or high levels, you know, again, those that may be more susceptible to illness, wearing a high-quality respirator like an N ninety-five, uh, is gonna be helpful, uh, in public, and then also be mindful of the interactions one may have, especially in the household, when it's socialization, uh, that one might be in act, uh, you know, doing as well. Uh, and then obviously, in the high levels, you know, that's when, you know, we'll be obviously kind of exploring how we would be communicating and also doing so, uh, in terms of just making the community aware of that too, uh, in terms of just following those actions to wear a mask, you know, or be mindful of kind of planning indoor activities, uh, and things of that nature. But, you know, there's a lot of different components to this. You know, this is the one data set the CDC is really kind of leading with, but it's also gonna be factoring in the wastewater monitoring and other things too, as we kind of mix and guidance, uh, in regards to that. So with that said, um, it's kind of presenting a little bit oddly right now, uh, probably because of the live life. But, uh, more or less, the story is, uh, this is the, uh, the variants and sub-variants of COVID nineteen that are circulating nationally, and you can see it's really a big hodgepodge. It's a very colorful one because, you know, they're color coding this from the CDC, but you can see a lot of different types, and you might have been seeing some of these in the news. EG five, F four one five one, X P B one sixteen, sixteen six. I mean, a lot of different portions. Right now, the lead right now is almost a twenty-five percent is EG five, but there's a couple others. You might have been hearing about the parola one, uh, that's also circuline as well. Uh, it has about like thirty-three mutations, uh, you know, it does seem to have potentially some increased, uh, virulence, but in terms of severity, no indication yet. And in terms of any body's immune response, you know, not a strong concern with that, but it's still something that's gonna be researched and better understood. So there's just a lot of sub-variants circulating, so we need to be mindful of that as well. That's really kind of the main story here. Uh, and then also, if this look at it from regional map, um, again, it's just a hodgepodge and mix, a potpourri of sorts, uh, nationally speaking, so it's not something that's terribly unique in terms of presenting one area uh, more so than the other, but unfortunately, yes, with the Northeast region too, which is New York, New Jersey, Virgin Islands, and Puerto Rico, we do have a larger proportion of, say, EG five at the moment, uh, along with F four one five one and a couple others. So it's just how kind of it's spreading, but as we can see here, once it's in one place, it's definitely making to another part of the country, which look pretty, been pretty successful with these waves. Uh, and with that said, you know, just from the prediction side or the forecast from the CDC, as you can see, they're currently indicating that at least since October, that there's some gradual increase of COVID activity, which we kind of all expect at this point, as the weather especially cools. Um, and then also looking at for community emergency department businesses, looking at for all ages, for the triple pandemic, and you can see how COVID's still on the higher end, has grown over the last few weeks, uh, along with obviously, um, you can see a slight uptick with, uh, even influenza and RSV, and especially when you break it down by age, we can kind of see that a little bit more closely. And so with that said, just keep it on RSV relative to the state of Connecticut. You can see here where we were, especially, you know, that real peak of RSV, we were really getting it hard, uh, the prior season, but you know, where we are right now, and you can see how it's a little slight uptick right now for the state of Connecticut in terms of positive detections relative to RSV. Uh, and then same story for influenza. This is a new update for influenza, like illness, again, keep in mind, this could be false positives because this is syndromic surveillance, this is not, you know, specifically positive tests, but more or less, as we can see here, the southern portion of the country, along with the southeast, as well as parts of the West Coast, are definitely picking up. Uh, so Texas being notable one, District of Columbia, or D.C., uh, and then even New York is slowly growing in terms of that I O I activity. Uh, Northeast, generally speaking, though, is doing, are faring okay, but yet, yes, this will be something that's gonna be shifted further north, uh, as our weather continues to cool and, and as well as other activities kind of shift to, to those holidays. Uh, and Thanksgiving is usually the big indicator for that, especially for COVID. Um, and so with that said, finally, you know, just, just to summarize real quick, um, the CDC has their Center for Forecasting, Analysis Analytics, uh, and so they published their outlook for the respiratory disease season. Uh, just to keep it, to, 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 you know, or paraphrase it to a very simplified format, uh, you know, they're anticipating potentially a moderate, uh, COVID season as well as for influenza and RSV, typical seasonal presentation, not necessarily less than we had just the recent season with the RSV especially being, uh, abnormally high. Uh, but they did also play out a couple scenarios, you know, scenario A and scenario B, where we kind of experienced scenario A, uh, a moderate influence in RSV season and moderate COVID wave and how it will play out in terms of hospitalizations. Uh, and that is a better scenario for us if that should happen. If, uh, obviously, we have scenario B here, severe influenza and RSV and moderate COVID wave, uh, that will result likely in much more hospitalizations. But it can be, what they're presenting here is, uh, there's a couple of scenarios that could play out, or if not, a few scenarios. Uh, and so we just need to be mindful of that, and to that point, you know, um, you know, prevention's gonna be a big name in the game, and that's definitely the vaccines. It's a major component of that to really kind of keep this wave low, given the fact that we have a vaccine for all three of these, or vaccines for all three of these. So just be mindful of that. So that was probably a little bit longer than I, oh, we originally planned for, but I just wanted to give you guys respiratory illness overview. So again, the name of the game is prevention, uh, and to be mindful of obviously kind of how the situation shifts, and you know, we'll be giving updates about that as well, uh, but then also vaccinations really, probably the most important message here, and the CDC hits that home in this documentation as well. Because we're in a very unique situation now that we have vaccines for all three of these viruses. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Um, just real quick, I wanted to know if anyone on the committee had, um, any questions. So Councilperson Greg Burnett.
Thank you, Chair Hubelman. Uh, yes, Brian, can you just elaborate on the first audit you showed about wastewater? What, what exactly are you reporting there? Because, um, I, I wasn't clear as to, you know, the, the number in Fairfield County. Um, what are they measuring?
So basically, they're taking wastewater samples, and they're testing for the COVID nineteen virus, the concentration of the virus in that, and you could roughly equate that to the amount of people that are experiencing COVID nineteen illness at that time. Uh, essentially shedding the virus, because you know, not only shedding it for the respiratory system, you're shedding it everywhere, and that also includes, uh, you know, your, your waste, uh, or people matter. And so that's what they're testing for, and it's a great indicator because majority of the population in, in most counties is using or relying on a sewer system of some sort. I mean, obviously, septic systems are due to be exclusion here. Uh, but if you're using any sort of commercial restroom, or you're obviously, if you live in an apartment building or someplace that's obviously has connection to the sewer system, uh, it's gonna be something that could be detected at that time. So that's basically a really good system. It's been something that's been validated, verified in the scientific literature, and it's been actually very much a growing field, uh, in terms of detecting not only COVID nineteen but other viruses and other, and other substances too. But at the moment, it's a really good indicator to kind of passively see what's going on, uh, in the different counties, at this, the city and town level, however you want to break it down, uh, but just kind of knowing what's going on. But given that, you know, in Norwalk is not a silo, it's really good to look at how the county's performing, because it's a good indicator where the COVID activity is going. And so to that point, Fairfield County is slowly growing, um, and it's the highest of generally all the counties for Connecticut. So that's the kind of the message to take away, but the three counties right now presenting with the decent amount of COVID activity, that's, you know, the virus being shed and, and then the wastewater system, hence being sampled and tested for it, uh, is Fairfield, Hartford, and New York County at the moment.
Just a quick follow-up question. Sure. Is, is there any specific Norwalk data? Uh, are we working with the WPCA to monitor or measure anything as relates specifically to Norwalk?
Correct. Yes, so there's sampling also as part of the average and the calculations that are presented for Fairfield County Norwalk is also a component of that. Uh, there's certain components of being mindful of presenting it as a singular picture, because it may be sometimes contradictory to what Fairfield County is presenting, but it's also, that's why I'm presenting it as Fairfield County. And also, we need to be mindful of some of the identifiability component related to that data. So there's something that we are working with, you know, it is our wastewater treatment plan is also submitting the samples for that contribute to the Fairfield County presentation. But again, like I said, Norwalk is not a silo. It's important to look in the context of the full picture, because people are working in neighboring towns, or they're working in Norwalk, and then vice versa, they're living somewhere else, maybe in Fairfield County. Uh, and so I think that's an important way to kind of illustrate what the situation is, and this has generally been more reliable than looking solely at specific to just that Norwalk itself. So I think that's another important thing as well. Um, but, uh, you know, this is also important because it gives us context, like how we're doing compared to the rest of the state. And so that's why I wanted to show the different counties this time out, because typically, what you would see is me presenting this more specifically, just only Fairfield County, like this. Uh, I just thought it'd be important to have some context in terms of the rest of the state as well.
Great, thank you.
Can, can I just quickly add, um, just a thank you to the WPCA and DPW? Because when they were approached about participating in this, they were one hundred percent supportive of it and wanted to do whatever they could, um, to help us support, you know, um, tracking the virus. So just want to say thank you to them.
Excellent. Um, Councilperson Nicole Ayers.
Thank you, um, Brian. Thank you for your presentation, always very thorough. You ended your presentation saying about, talking about prevention, and so trying to connect the dots with our, um, public participation. Is it in the scope of this Health Department to post preventive information on public property? I thought we could kind of only do that on places that we own or facilitate. If you're talking about provision, prevention, masks are a way of preventing. So are, are we capable of doing that? Are we, is that within the law? Can you give any guidance around that?
Uh, I, I can start, you know, again, and I think Deanna definitely could follow us up, but, uh, from, from my ends, uh, you know, again, the CDC guidance that I was sharing before, uh, in terms of the new hos- the county-level hospital emissions, new emissions for the last seven days, or eight, uh, along with obviously some of the other guidance that they have outlined, you know, it's definitely one of the primary items that's kind of helping us guide in terms of those communications, and especially those alerts. Um, and so that's definitely an important component of that, but then also in terms of the other aspects. So I'll defer to Deanna to kind of elaborate some more.
Sure, so, um, thank you, uh, Councilperson Ayers. Um, that's a great question. Um, you know, during, you know, the beginning stages of the pandemic, when there was the reopen guidelines, you remember, there were requirements that are, you know, state law and order that, you know, certain businesses, establishments had to provoke, um, from, uh, present information, you know, about how to keep people safe. Um, but since then, it's, it's been, you know, voluntary, you know, for people to post, uh, prevention messages, and we've been really focusing on community members, working with community health workers and the nonprofits and others, that to get the word out, you know, doing the direct speaking to people, and then all the other different means, as you know, um, with community providers, helping, having, having them assist us, you know, with getting the word out, as Brian said, the alerts, um, being on these meetings. And so, um, you know, we're, you know, we're not at the point where we can require businesses, you know, to post certain messages, um, but we can certainly work on promoting all of the, the messages that, you know, are out there and developed, and that we can, you know, customize for our community.
Great, thank you very much, Brian. Thank you, uh, again, for the work that you've done, and, um, it was great because we haven't had, uh, a good, you know, an update in a, in a little, in a little bit. So I'm glad that you were able to provide that for us, uh, this evening. Um, I'd like to turn it over again to, um, our award-winning Health Director, Deanna Di Amore.
Thank you, yeah. It's an award-winning Health Department. We've got an amazing team, and we're in an amazing city. Um, so just to piggyback off what Brian was saying, um, we wanted to share some more information about like COVID testing. So, um, the federal government has announced that the, the free COVID tests are gonna be available in the mail again, so you might have seen that in the news, but starting Monday, you can, um, go to covidtest.gov to sign up for up to four tests to be shipped, uh, per household. Um, the shipments, shipments will start October second, so please help us get the word out about that. Um, we've also been working on our own test kit distributions. Um, we are completing our fourth one right now, um, and that's not even counting the large ones that, um, emergency management, um, led with the help of our amazing emergency response team, and, and you have all the public safety, um, organizations. Um, but we've, uh, so far distributed over sixteen, about sixteen thousand test kits through the Health Department and with the help of our community partners. Um, and we're going to be ordering some more. We've got some more grant funding, so we're looking to order about forty-six hundred more. So we'll, again, be working with our partners to get it, uh, those out and really working to promote it, especially with, you know, the seniors, and we've worked recently with Mary Oster. Big thank you to her to getting, um, more test kits out to the early childhood providers. Um, so we're continuing to do that. Um, we also are hosting flu clinics, so just wanted to let everyone know we have our community flu clinics, and people can go online and register at norwalkct.gov/flu, or they can call our vaccine info line at two oh three eight five four seven nine eight five to make appointments. Our staff are available to, available to assist. Um, but our clinics are scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, uh, in the evening at Brian McMahon, Thursday, October twenty-sixth, from ten to twelve at the North Senior Center. Um, and then we're also gonna have walk-in clinics, um, where we're asking people to, um, make appointments for, but you know, as demand slows down, they'll be, become walk-ins. But, um, we're having those, a series of those in November on Thursday afternoon. So please reach out to us if you're trying to get, um, the flu vaccine. And we're also, um, we're, we're exploring and looking into whether we can provide the COVID vaccine or not. We're still, you know, insurances are working on figuring out coverage and, and all of that. So we're working out like all the costs and seeing whether, um, you know, what we're gonna be doing for COVID, but wanted to promote the flu vaccines.
Great, thank you very much, um, Ms. Di Amore. Um, moving on to, uh, discussion section B, updates from the Chief of Community Services, Mr. Lamont Daniels.
Great, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair. So I'm going to defer, uh, our updates to the presentation that was presented by, uh, Mr. Carlos Dukas, um, our Fair and, uh, and ADA coordinator for the City of Norwalk.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Carlos Duke, our Fair and Coordinator for the City of Norwalk. I'm gonna try to share my, my screen. Bear with me, because this is the first time I'm doing this.
And Carlos, why Carlos is doing this? Um, I don't, Carlos, have you, have you been before the, uh, Community Services Committee before? I don't remember.
No, negative, this is the first time.
Okay, great, great, great. So as he prepares that, I do want to introduce him, and again, I want to thank this committee. Um, it's just been over, you know, what, I don't, we get the days mixed up now because of COVID. But if you recall, we lost Anna Keegan, who was amazing, and, um, through, through our department, I've asked this committee, uh, for support so that we can maintain, uh, a fair rent officer and also elevate our ADA work here in the City of Norwalk. And so, um, while Carlos has been with us now, has it been a year yet, Carlos?
Not yet, ten months.
Not yet.
About a year.
Um, he has joined us and has hit. He has joined us and has hit the ground running. And so Anna Vivian here, here. We're both here to support him. But we also kind of said, Carlos, this is going to be your show. Because I also wanted the public to know who he is. And also get a chance to hear the great work he's doing. And then, of course, the presentation that he'll be presenting. So Chair, through you. I just want to thank you for your time again tonight. And also welcome Carlos Duke to the community services team. Through human services and he supervised Anna Vivian. So thank you again and welcome, Carlos. We're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to say welcome as well, Carlos, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much. So can everybody see the slide? Says COVID nineteen relief assistance program?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you can. Thank you.
All right. Good job. Thank you. Why the relief assistance program? Forty-two percent of Norwalk population falls under the ALIS threshold. What is the ALIS threshold? ALIS stands for asset limited income constrained employee. It represents the growing number of single adults or families who earn less than the basic cost of living. ALIS is based off the household survival budget, which is the minimum cost to live and work in our area. Forty-seven percent of Norwalk renters are cost burdened. They're spending thirty percent of their income in housing costs. Housing is the number two reason why residents come to the community resource hub for assistance. Additionally, forty-five percent, forty-five percent of residents who contacted my office, the Fairland office. Were struggling with a rent increase or an eviction. This program will allocate five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding for short term relief assistance. Program. It will be administered by the flagship agencies of Person to Person and Alliance for Community Empowerment. These agencies will be assessing that this will stabilize the household. I additionally want to emphasize that the payments will go directly to the landlords. The proposed use for the funding will be for rent, rental arrears. Utility costs or utility arrears and also mortgage payment assistance. Applicants must be Norwalk residents, must have established residency in Norwalk before March first of twenty twenty. And priority will be given to households in qualified census tract. Residents can be approved for up to two months of payments based on the fair market rent. Households cannot exceed seventy-five percent of the area media, area median income. For example, for a family of four, the max household income would be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Some of the required documents are proof of identity, proof of citizenship or eligible status. A current lease or proof of rent payments and a landlord W nine. Additionally, proof of income and proof of financial hardship due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Additional documents may be required. It's on a case by case basis. If anyone has any questions, we're then happy to answer. If not, thank you all for your time.
Great. Thank you, Carlos, very much. We will take questions from the committee. I see Councilperson Greg Burnett has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair Hooverman. My question is, what, what happens once the ARPA dollars are exhausted? Because, you know, that's a one time funding source. What, what happens after that?
Carlos, if you want to take it, and we're going to tag team and support it, but Carlos, you could, but Carlos, you take it, but Anna Vivian, I will jump in if necessary.
Yep, I'm here.
Well, the funds are going to be helped to stabilize in household. So it's not going to be a Band-Aid. It will be, it will help the family be stabilized. Additionally, there are other resources in the, in the city of Norwalk. But we want to make sure that when these agencies are trying to help out. They're able to get back on track and they won't need any additional resources moving forward or any additional funding.
And just to add, Anna Vivian, jump in, you know, we, we team everything. I think what's key is that both Person to Person and Alliance for Community Department. And Carlos, I love that word. They are most certainly our flagship organizations. So Councilman Burnett, they also do an assessment. So, and this is, and this is why we are asking for your approval for to choose these two organizations. Because this is what they do every day. So they have the necessary procedures and protocols and assessment to know that. These are families who are just saying, listen, I fell on bad, you know, instances because of COVID. I have a job. I may have lost wages. I just need support for these two months and I'm fine. I won't need additional resources. So that's really the target that we are identifying in Norwalk residents. And based on Carlos's. Presentation and constant conversation, both with Person to Person and Alliance. They, they have identified Norwalk families who can just really use some support. Again, this is not to give them money and then we, they find themselves in the same situation. We're not talking about these families. They're families who fell on hard times because of COVID and can use some support. And, and COVID allows ARPA dollars to be used for the specific reason. Anna Vivian is our housing specialist because she did this work in Stanford. She can probably articulate it better than me. But I'll defer, I'll defer to her if she want to just speak to this. Have we really studied this very closely in our city with our two partners?
Absolutely. And I'm going to apologize for the background noise. I got the babies with me. But really, Greg, this is meant to be a support in the sense that when they go to. Person to person, when they go to Alliance, Alliance is screening them if they need different types of assistance. So this wouldn't be appropriate for someone who can't stabilize, right? So if they lost their job. And they don't have another job prospect on the table, then we're really talking about, is there somewhere else they can move eviction prevention? Trying to find alternative resources. This wouldn't be the appropriate intervention for them. Now, they missed a month while they were between jobs. They missed a month because they were sick due to COVID and they didn't have sick benefits. They didn't have P T O, they didn't have luxuries that some of us have in other fields. This would be appropriate for them because with this assistance, they'd be able to stabilize and move forward. But both of those agencies. Come with case management attached to it. And they would be able to assess for those alternative routes if that's what's necessary for the households.
Great. Thanks, Anna Vivian. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Councilperson Burnett, do you have any follow up? All right. Councilperson Nicole Ayers, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to unmute and say that particularly for people who fall in the ALIS population. These are people who are working class people. These are not people who are normally. Able to receive any assistance because of the income that they generate. So these are people who probably have needed assistance all along, but they are making enough money based on state regulations or whatever program revelation. Regulations that they fall outside of the scope of getting help. And so I'm happy to see the city of Norwalk. Through the community service department and in partnership with those two stellar, I want to say stellar. Community providers to give these people a hand up. I, I really hope going forward, we find some more support for ALIS population families. Because many times they are not the families who are receiving additional, you know, other support that people traditionally think about. These are the hardworking people who are just not being able to get in speak. These are not the people that for unfortunate reasons. Have lost their jobs or unable to be housed. These are people who have been able to sustain themselves. And have decent paying jobs, but those decent paying jobs still is, are not enough income to help them in a struggle. And so I'm very pleased and, and support this initiative with a full heart.
Do you, Chair Hooverman, may I respond?
Yes, please. Yes.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much, Councilperson Nicole Ayers. And I think, again, you know, we asked Carlos to give like a high level overview. I know you all have additional information that kind of lays out the program in a little more detail. And these two organizations will be working together. So one, 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 you know, families, individuals can't, if they qualify, they can't go to Person to Person and then go to Alliance. They will be working together. And then Anna Vivian is our amazing person that helps us keep our data. And so we, we have these, you know, not benchmarks, I don't know, you know, systems in place. So that it's getting to the right people. And, you know, and, and I need to say, so there's no abuse. I know there's been some literature. Out there around, you know, abuse with these type of support programs. We have full confidence in these two organizations to ensure. That it's, 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 it's getting to the, the right families. And the ALIS families are definitely families and many, many, many families in Norwalk. Who are often not eligible for the services because of their, because of their income.
Thank you, Chief Daniels. Yes, I, I, I want to add on to that and basically reiterate what's been said. But that, that I'm really glad to see that we are doing something for that, sort of that middle ground, that, you know, the, the families that. You know, one event that they suddenly need to pay additional monies for puts, can put them behind. And yet. They, they have, they have resources, but they don't have these resources. And I'm glad to see that we're extending something using the ARPA money in this way. I would hope that down the road, we can find a way to, you know, continue a program like this. Through other sources and that, that we would look, you know, look forward to being able to do that. But I'm glad that we're able to do that now. And I agree with all of the wonderful adjectives that have been used to describe these two organizations because they are. Truly amazing parts of our community. And I, I'm glad that we're partnered with them in doing something like this. Are there any other questions from the committee? All right, we'll see none. I would like to, unless you have anything else that you want to add, Chief Daniels?
Of course, I always do. I'll be brief.
Okay, go ahead.
I know. Thank you. And again, I just want to say thank you, you all, you know, we, we received two million dollars. Over the two years and we spent, you know, we did the first million five, actually, no, I'm sorry, three million. We did the first million five last year. And this, so now we're in our second year, just to put it in context. So with the million five for year two, to your point, Councilman Burnett, this is the last tranche of that funding. So, and, and then, you know, Councilperson Nicole is always, and also a Councilperson Revelos is always encouraging to please. Get community input. Please hear what the people are saying. And so as you can see with this final year, we, we allocated. For the rental program. And so we're, myself, Carlos, and we will continue to, to hear from our community. Especially from our community partners and think strategically of how do we, you know, again, this is the last money we have. How do we think strategically? And how do we make a difference in the lives of Norwalkers that have been impacted by COVID nineteen? Because we know, as we talk to our community partners, there are still many residents and families that still have yet to bounce back. And so our team continuously is looking how to support them. And I just want to thank you for your support. For just, just encouraging us and also just, you know, leading us in, 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 you know, giving us. You know, approval to think strategically, but also think in response to community needs in, in a real, in a real way. So I just wanted to appreciate that. So more to come before you over the next two months, because we want to draw down at one million dollars. And get it to residents and nonprofits in a way that's meaningful. So thank you, Chair Hooverman.
Thank you, Chief Daniels. All right, we will move on to the action items. This is number five, action items. First up is the health department. Item one A and one B. I will read, what we'll do, I'm going to read them both and we will move them both together. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept. Public health workforce development and infrastructure grant funds from the Connecticut Department of Public Health. In the amount of three hundred thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for the period October first, twenty twenty-three through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And one B is authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments. And amendments as may be necessary to implement the public health workforce development and infrastructure grant activities. For the period October first, twenty twenty-three through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. May I have a motion? Councilperson Barbara Smith, thank you very much. I would like to turn this over to Ms. Deanna Di Amore. I'm sorry, award winning Deanna Di Amore and.
Thank you so much. So this is a really exciting opportunity for us. The National Association of County and City Health Officials really advocated for investment in local health departments. And they were able to work, you know, with the CDC to ensure that funding for workforce and infrastructure development. Was allocated to both state health departments and local health departments. So this is really exciting that we're. We're going to get about three hundred thousand dollars that we can spend over four years on investments in our workforce. And so this could be trainings. It could be, you know, setting up paid internships. It can be also just investing in the wellness of our workforce. Recognizing the need to recover from the COVID pandemic. So it could be workforce engagement, well-being, improving emotional, mental. And physical health outcomes of the workforce, training to refresh skills, to learn new skills. So it's really exciting. So I'm hoping for your support for this, this grant opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions from any members of the committee? Seeing none, I'd like to call for the vote. All those in favor of moving these two items to the council, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? None? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. This will be on the agenda for September twenty-sixth. Thank you. And thank you, award winning health director, Ms. Deanna Di Amore. Community services, number one. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments. Or amendments as may be necessary with the Alliance for Community, Community Empowerment Incorporated. Located at one oh eight Main Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. And Person to Person Incorporated, located at seventy-six South Main Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. To administer the community services department ARPA COVID nineteen rent relief program. For Norwalk residents with each organization receiving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For a total amount of five hundred thousand dollars from account number noted. May I have a motion? Thank you. Councilperson Nicole Ayers moves the item. Are there any questions from anyone? Now, we had a wonderful presentation. Thank you, Carlos, for that. And Chief Daniels, is there anything that you would like to add at this point?
No, of course. Again, I just want to say thank you because, you know, I, I take pride in our city. And I do meet with other directors and community social services across the city, across the state. And we, we are certainly a leader and definitely shout out to our award winning health director. So again, I just want to thank this committee. For your continued support under my tenure as the leader of community services and for your ongoing support. I'll be back. So I just want to say thank you again. We heard our community. We know where these families are. We have flagship organizations as Carlos has indicated. And we're really excited with your support to be able to help Norwalk families stay in their homes, stay, stay in their residence. And, and, and be thriving residents here in our city. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions or comments from any members of the committee? Seeing and hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of moving this item to the common council, please signify by raising your hands. Any opposed? Abstentions? No? Motion carries unanimously. This will also be on the agenda for the twenty-sixth meeting. And before we adjourn, I just want to add one note that our meeting next month. Will also need to be a special meeting, a half hour earlier, same as this time, six thirty P M. So we can make a note of that. And the more, more to come on that. So thank you all very much. Can I get a motion, a motion? Thank you, Ms. Nicole Ayers.
Thank you very much.
Great. All those in favor? Great. Uh, all those in favor? And we've motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned for this meeting this evening. Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Bye bye.